Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 14th, 2023 regular board meeting. I'd like to apologize if we were in an executive session, which will be announced later, and that was our delay in starting the meeting. And I'll move on to the live streaming announcement. I'd just like to announce that the meetings of the Mechanicsburg Area School District Board of Directors are being recorded and livestreamed for the purpose of transparency and increased public access. The livestream, along with the recordings from previously held meetings, can be found on the school board's YouTube channel. At this time, if I would like to rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time of a brief moment of silent meditation. Mr. Longwell, roll call.
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Burkhard.
Here.
Mr. Hartman. Dr. Lebo. Mrs. Maris.
Here.
Ms. Morgan.
Here.
Dr. Rhodes.
Present.
Mr. Sanker.
Here.
And Mr. Rob.
Here.
We'll go on to endorsement of agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes, Mr. Rob, and the agenda will otherwise stand as written.
On the reading of the minutes of the regular board meeting on February 14th, 2022, do any board members have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Other than it should be 2023.
That is what it says. That's not what I... Oh, no, you're right. We do need a little change there.
Yep. Just check to see if everything...
Good eye. We'll move on to item two, hearing of visitors of items on the meeting agenda. There will be two opportunities for public comment this evening. As a reminder, a public comment is limited to residents of the school district. At this time, we have reached the first opportunity for public comment. This opportunity is reserved for comments related to items that are listed on the evening's agenda. A second opportunity for public comment will occur at the end of the meeting. The second opportunity for public comment is reserved for comments on issues not listed on the agenda and not being voted upon. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and requires community members to observe a reasonable decorum. If you'd like to address the board, please come up to the podium and share your district name and address. This is for items that are on the agenda tonight.
Yes, good evening. My name is Robert Schaefer. I live at 904 Peachtree Drive, Upper North Township. Two comments. The first is to congratulate whoever it is on the board who committing that devised the dress code, and I would like to say that I appreciate the attention to cultural, religious, and other diverse expressions that are manifested in the revision of the dress codes. I think whoever is responsible did a nice job on what is a controversial and sensitive topic has been at times. My second comment is on the proposed agreement with Minno State University. I'm not in a position, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but it is not immediately self-evident to me why Mechanicsburg needs to have an agreement with the State University of North Dakota to help prepare student teachers and future teachers. So when that does come to the agenda, I would hope that there would be some explanation as to why it was felt there would be a need to go so far afield to help prepare. And I would say, as somebody who has worked in the past as a university supervisor, including with some student teachers in Mechanicsburg, including some who then became Mechanicsburg teachers, that those of us at local universities are familiar with Pennsylvania state standards. We work with our students and then student teachers about those, and I hope that if there is such an agreement with Minno State or any other out-of-state university, that there is some attention to preparing those out-of-state people to what is being taught in Pennsylvania, how it's being taught in Pennsylvania. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Any other comment for items that are on the agenda tonight? Saying none. Move on to item three, reports and presentations. Superintendent of Schools Report, Dr. Lott.
Yes, good evening. I have a few items under my report this evening, and we'll start with none other than Elmwood Academy presentation to the board, as the board recalls. And for those in the audience, we have been taking about one school each month to share some of the great things that are happening in the school district, and Mr. Underkoffler is here this evening to help get us started with that.
Speaking of dress code, I thought I'd express myself here with a coat, and this coat actually is the beginning of a story. So I come to you with some stories to tell and some people to help me tell them. So I'm Joe Underkoffler, principal of Elmwood Academy, and we've been telling some stories over the last month back in January, and I'll start with this. I tried to find the most ridiculous picture of my father, in case he's live streaming at home. This is my father, Gerald Leroy Underkoffler. And when I first started out in education, I started out as a substitute teacher, and I first started in Steelton High Spire, and then I went to Big Spring, and I became a building substitute or a district substitute, guaranteed work every day, and I would show up and they would assign me where to go. Well, I remember distinctly, my father was a principal at Newville Elementary at the time, when he was just finishing up his career and I was just starting mine. I distinctly remember him dismissing the buses outside, and he was wearing this coat. And I remember it being a cold, blustery day, as was today, and I remember thinking, wow, I can't imagine doing this for another 35 years, as I was just getting started and he was just finishing up his. So for me to pass this coat down means a lot to me. So I never in a thousand years would have predicted I would go into education myself after hearing stories around the dinner table from my father and my mother, who was my music teacher for seven years, bless her heart. And so I thought I would never get into education, and here I am standing before you today as not only in education, but would never imagine me doing something else otherwise. So our stories are very similar, besides our great hair. We share other similarities of being a teacher for 15 years, and we're both educators in the classroom long before we were principals. We both went to Messiah College. We both met our wives there. We both have a love of music, of carpentry, of woodworking, of all sorts of things, and so perhaps all along the way, it's not that surprising that I would be wearing this jacket and standing before you here today. So there's not, as you know, every job has its difficulties, every job has its challenges, and it's things that really are wonderful about it. There's no one who, unless they were in your shoes, doing your same job, it's hard for you to be able to relate, to know what it's really like. And so it's neat to be able, for me, to call my dad up and say, hey, you wouldn't believe what I was dealing with today, or hey, this amazing thing happened. And so it's neat to be able to have someone to talk to, to relate to. And that's me down here, the little guy down there in the bottom right corner. And my brother, who's actually a teacher as well, in a different district.
Does he have more hair than you now, still?
My dad still has a full head. It's a little grayer, but yes, he still has it there. So I'm here to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing here this month back in January. There's a purpose to it. It isn't just to craft stories and to work on our storytelling skills, but really, when we come down to it, is this is our vision in action. So a couple of years ago, under Mr. Bitz's leadership, we had co-created a vision narrative of what we wanted our school to be like. And so we depicted a learning community that were positive relationships, served as the foundation of our school, where we foster this opportunity for students to gain a sense of belonging, that they feel connected, and they feel like they belong. They don't have to check their culture or whatever at the door when they come in. Intentional partnerships with families will serve, and so the stories that you're going to hear today is not just the students telling about the story, but there's a lot of family connections there. And for them to be able to understand more about their family as they're telling these stories, I think is really valuable. And we again see the value of diversity that we have as individuals, yet see unity in acting in each other's best interest. Last part here, inspired to explore, broaden our horizons by investigating the intercultural world around us. We're a very diverse school, and that's an asset to us, and so to learn more about each other. And then challenge your thinking. We start to perhaps analyze our own perspectives that perhaps may be a little bit different, and what we hear is not right or wrong, it's just different. And so to hear and learn about other students and families, and the customs, traditions, cultures perhaps that they bring, that may really make us an outstanding learning community. So I'm going to turn it over here. We have three storytellers that are going to join us. I told them to keep the stories under 15 minutes each, so I am. So Isaac, come on up. You're going to tell your story. This is Isaac.
Hi, my name is Isaac Nippon, and this is a toy Mercedes-Benz 300 SL. It was my great-grandpa Jerry's. He was a traveling salesman, and he would buy or sell whatever would fit in the back of his trunk, so he bought cars with really big trucks. My dad says he remembers that he would open the trunk of his grandpa's car, my great-grandpa's car, and it would be full of all these tiny little firecrackers that if you threw on the ground, they would explode. This isn't... Oh, the story goes that he would buy CB radios and then sell them and buy pistachios, and then he would trade the pistachios for toy cars. Using that method, he collected hundreds of them. This is important to my family because my family's been collecting matchbox cars for four generations. First, my great-grandpa Jerry, then my grandpa Rich, then my dad, and now me and my brother are carrying on the tradition of collecting matchbox cars. In the future, I hope that this toy car, as well as many others, can be passed down to me, and that I may pass it down to my children or grandchildren. Thank you.
Evelyn.
Can I ask, I want to know how many cars you have?
I have, we have like six billion bucks.
This is Evelyn.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Huffman, and this is my story. I am adopted along with my two biological siblings from Colombia and South America. And the way I was able to get to know my family before I met them in person was by a picture book that my parents sent to us from America. Because we spoke a different language, the words were in, the words are in Spanish instead of English. It shows pictures of my parents, my three other siblings who are adopted from Guatemala, and my soon-to-be pets. It also shows pictures of my house and outdoor equipment, like a pool, trampoline, and multiple sunburners. It also shows pictures of some of our friends. I am so thankful that I am a Huffman now. This coming December, I will be, I will have been adopted by my parents for seven years. Thank you.
Yeah, if you have any follow-up questions before we go to the next one, that's okay too.
What happened to your arm?
A kid...
You knew I had to ask, right?
It was an accident. At recess, a kid accidentally kicked a basketball at me and dislocated my thumb just like a week ago.
There were no soccer injuries.
No, not this one.
I thought it was a trampoline.
But you've never had an...
All right, and the last finale is we have Holden. Holden, come on in.
This is my grandfather's catcher's mitt. It's 63 years old, which is why it might look different than the baseball mitt you might be seeing today. Some of you might have known Don Shirley. This is my dad's dad, who passed away from kidney cancer before I had a chance to meet him. He and my dad shared a love for baseball, and I love baseball too. This makes me feel closer to my grandfather. My dad has shared a lot of stories about my grandfather, and this mitt reminds me of these stories. My grandfather was a teacher at Mechanicsburg Senior High and had baseball coach for 36 years. From what I am told, he was a pretty special guy who helped a lot of people. Our school's baseball field, that soldiers and sailors park is named after him, Bikimball Shirley Field. My dad inherited this mitt after his dad passed away. And when I was born, it was used to decorate my room, along with other baseball items and photos passed down from my family. Right now, it sits on a shelf in my room where I can see it every day. I hope to fulfill my grandfather's dream of making it to the major leagues using his mitt in my first game as a major league catcher. This mitt will be passed on to my kids and our stories about our family's love for baseball. I want to keep the tradition going. When I see this mitt, I feel closer to my grandfather. I feel like my grandfather is with me. I didn't get a chance to meet him, but I know his love for baseball is our connection, and it would make him really happy. This mitt is connected to my grandfather, of course, but it also means a lot to my dad. When my parents got married, my dad put this catcher's mitt on a seat where my grandfather showed us that. It represents his memory and his love for our whole family, even as he watches us from heaven. If you know my family, you know that baseball is a part of our culture. I know it makes my dad happy that we've taken good care of this mitt and that it's still on this school in my room. But what matters most is what this mitt represents. It represents me, it represents me that my grandfather would be proud of my love for baseball. It also reminds me that my grand, that I, that it also reminds me to be a good sportsman and good friend, both on the baseball field and with anything I do in life. Thank you for letting me share my story so I can keep the legacy of my grandfather alive
So Holden, I knew your grandfather, and he was an amazing man, and I'm going to take a little story time myself right now about your grandfather. So before I even knew Mechanicsburg, I coached baseball in Chambersburg, and Chambersburg and Mechanicsburg had quite the rivalry. Your grandfather was also a very competitive student. As a young teacher, I was given the task of trying to steal signs from your grandfather at third base, and so I watched him very attentively for several innings, and he picked up on what I was doing and basically started doing very crazy kinds of signs, knowing that I didn't have a clue what he was doing, and would wink at me and smile at me, and he had no idea even who I was. Thanks for sharing your story. That was a good one.
So that's it. That's a little taste of what we've been doing. So every student has been sharing, had a chance to share with their homerooms, a story. I heard Evelyn even had two stories that she shared with her class, and so the kids here today are nominated by their teachers. It was impossible for Mrs. Barr and me to listen and hear all the stories, so we rely on the teachers to be able to hand-select some good ones for us to share in front of our school and then also in front of me tonight. So thank you again for your time and your support in what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for having me here. Stop, Phil.
I just want to say that, man, I am thoroughly impressed. I can't imagine the pressure to get up here and speak in front of your board, and you guys, every one of the stories, I just, almost brought me to tears, every one of them. It was amazing. That was awesome.
I was told at dinner tonight to be prepared because my daughter is at Elmwood. She's an instructional aide at Elmwood, and she said, be prepared for the stories that are going, and I had no idea that, I mean, surpassed it greatly, so thank you. Thank you everyone for sharing.
Yeah, I'm impressed with the first one that just spoke without any notes, too. That was very impressive. Very good.
We can call the whole meeting now, by the way. We're done. I'm sorry. I made it. We're done.
And Holden, before you leave, I just want to tell you, I had your grandfather as a teacher his first year teaching, and I'm old. I have sixes in my age.
What grade were you in?
I believe he was in 10th.
Well, you're not that old.
I challenged him.
Big surprise there.
Look where you are now. I'm here because of people like him, actually. I mean that. Don't forget that. Thank you all very much, and you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to stay either. It's completely up to you, so thank you for coming.
The next item that I have for the board this evening is an amazing group that has been working with our school district for many years now, and I'll actually ask Mr. Bigum if he would do an introduction for the Operation Wildcat annual report.
So there's always a risk in going second, especially when you follow up students that we saw here this evening, so I feel compelled to tell a story as well. So the spring of 2006, a few of our PTOs came together to meet the needs of a family, and in doing so, came up with this concept, if we could do all this for one family, what could we do together if we pull our resources for all the families in Mechanicsburg Area School District? And 17 years later, and 16 projects strongly going, Operation Wildcat continues to be a blessing for our school district and our community. So I'm pleased tonight to be here to introduce them. Maureen Ross, the vice president of Operation Wildcat, is there anything you wanted to say, or you just want me to like, okay? First, what I will do is I'll ask those that are in the audience who are our chairs or servants of Operation Wildcat to stand and be recognized. I think that, you know, the efforts that this represented group of... So you're going to see a video, a culmination of a year review of all of the things that
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just to try to bring some closure, I want to publicly thank Jen Nossa, Mechanicsburg alumnus and Dr. Recording Secretary at NMA NOS for putting together that presentation. And I hope the board is able to see the number of community-based connections that are being made through the projects in Operation Wildcat. It's truly a community magnet program that has evolved and has served the students and families of our community for seventeen years now. And it's a continued blessing. And I thank each and every one of the volunteers who continue to give their time and energies and gifts and talents to bring all of us together to meet the needs of our students. So, again, thank you. And we are going to excuse ourselves to go downstairs to continue to do business, because we have a general meeting downstairs to talk some shop, so.
Before you go, I just want to say, Maureen, I remember when you said to me, Dr. Leidy, we're gonna make $10,000 on these yard sales. Right. And now you're up to a quarter of a million dollars, so that's unbelievable. Thank you all so much. I tell you, you can't sit there and watch that and not feel a connection for our kids and a sense of belonging. We talk about belonging a lot lately for the children in our community. And you had the opportunity to hear three of them speak tonight, their stories. You are contributing to their stories in the work that you're doing in this community. And somebody said it takes a village in one of the segments there, and Mechanicsburg's a beautiful village, and it has to do with the fact that we all work together to serve our kids and our families. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for that.
True.
Every year I say it, it's just the most amazing thing. And I tell other people outside of our district, and they're just blown away. So, I just can't believe it's only been seventeen years. I feel like you've been here forever. I know it's a long time. It's amazing. Thank you for your hard work.
I'd just like to add on to what Tracy said. It's amazing every year when I see what you people do. It's just, and the fact, as Mr. Brigham said, how it actually does tie the entire community together. It's not just a school thing, it's not just a kid thing. Well, it reaches out to everybody in the community, old and new, and, you know, hopefully keeps them together as a team, a working team. So, thank you again for everything you do.
I'd like to say that it, I think I say this all every time, Operation Wildcat is not just about the people on the committee and what you do, it's the students that you touch and how you're affecting how they feel about service for the rest of their lives. And, you know, having two students, one's out now, one another student in the district, you know, your work that you've done in the community inspired him. And, you know, there are students in our schools that are creating clubs that are based off of service. And, you know, while these kids get the accolades that they thought of it, it's not really about that, it's about who inspired them. And that's what you guys do, really. So, you give and you, the projects that you do, it doesn't just end there. It really is kind of exponential, right? And the kids that you're touching and how they're gonna be for the rest of their lives viewing service. So, it's amazing, right? It's incredible.
Enjoy your meeting.
Thanks.
All right. And the last item I have under my report this evening is the first of two presentations around the general fund budget. And tonight's is on revenue.
Positive stuff.
That's right. This is the three positive things.
Boy, this is a tough fall on those two presentations.
Boring.
Hey, that's all right. That's all right.
Can you turn one of those things?
Oh, yeah. That one is for the cameras.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, as Dr. Leidy had shared, this is really the first of our two final presentations around budget. And so, this section is where we will focus on the revenue of the general fund. And then, at the end of the month, on March 28th, we'll come back and talk about the expense side of the budget, breaking it into two parts, looking at where are we with revenue, where are we with expense? And then, really moving forward to the month of April, where we would like to present the entire budget in its proposed final format for the board's consideration. And then, the final budget would be then presented in June for consideration for final adoption. The budget, in some ways, is a year-long process. I think, as our board knows, to me, in the fall, it really begins with the conversation around our budget calendar, which really serves as a framework for how do we gather input and information from our stakeholders about what their needs are in terms of resources to support our programs. All the while, in the fall, we're working on the audit from the prior year, where we're trying to say, well, how did we end? Let's finalize our actual results. And then, we're updating our trends to say what was happening with expenses, what's happening with revenue, and what are considerations that we should carry from those discussions into the next budget process. As fall gives way to January, and frankly, the winter months, we're in the midst of budget season with our teacher leaders and our administrators, where we're gathering the data for the budget. We're trying to make all the final adjustments to really get to the point where we're coming back in the months of March and April for those final discussions around budget. And so, by way of preview, then tonight's focus really does become the revenue side of the equation. I'll stand up if that's all right. In terms of tonight's discussion, a brief agenda is we will look at the Act One base index and the adjusted index. We'll take a look at the historical real estate tax data, where we talk a little bit about what have our historical increases been, but maybe taking a further dive to say how much of those increases have been dedicated to support construction and the financing plan, and how much of those increases have been to support operations. And then, we'll talk a little bit more specifically about the revenue side of the budget, looking at the three buckets of local revenue, state, and federal. In terms of the Act One index, the base index is 4.1% for the upcoming year, 2023-24. Our Act One adjusted index is 4.8%. And so, as we look at revenues, our goal is to continue to look at what were the needs associated with the financing plan, which was one and a half percent for the upcoming year. But then, also, as we finalize the expense side of the budget, what do we need to support those operational costs? So, to draw a connection, when we're looking at the trends in expenses, saying what were trends in expenses, what were adjustments that we needed, getting through all of the budget conversations with our teacher leaders and our administrators, saying what were additional costs associated with their cost centers or their budget requests that we need to incorporate into the budget? And then, what does that come down to in terms of needing something additional to support those operational costs?
Since we have, maybe have a bigger audience of the base and the adjusted index, what's the difference?
That's a good question. So, the base index is what is applicable, it's what PDE publishes every fall, and it's the starting point for the limit that school districts have to live within in terms of the annual tax increase for their budgets. There's a further adjustment that gets published after that initial base index is published, and that is based on your market value aid ratio. And so, for those school districts to have a market value aid ratio above 0.4, there's a further adjustment proportionally based on where you fall on that spectrum. And so, our adjusted index is 4.8%, which is then the limit that we have to live within for our upcoming budget process.
I tried not to get on my soapbox about this, but I'll have to add it in now. So, I'm, said another way, because we have poorer people in our district, we're allowed to tax them more, to tax up to the 4.8%, which never makes any sense to me. So, I always lean towards the base index if we can, because we're just making the problem worse.
Yeah, and I think it's a, and it's a good observation. I think that is a little bit of the challenge between what, where do you land with the base and where do you land with the adjusted index, and what really drives the adjustment in the first place, as you pointed out. So, looking historically at real estate tax rates, 1819 is really the first year of our financing plan. Construction really began, those construction conversations really began in 16, 17, and 18. And then, we began to phase in millage to support our financing plan in 1819. And so, there you can see the construction increase is the column that really represents the amount that we've set aside for our financing plan to support construction. And in the construction process, we really designed our buildings as a reminder to the public to support growing enrollment, to support our academic programs, and then also to address needs of our building and infrastructures at all of our buildings. The operational increase, then, is what I would say supports the need for additional programs, the need to address rising trends in cost. And so, I like to look at it in those two areas to say, the total increase is what is listed there in that third blue column, but of that total increase, how much of it was set aside for the financing? And then, also, how much of that did we set aside for operational costs? As a final reminder, the financing plan, as we get toward the end of construction, we're done with all of elementary. One of the last projects that's on the books to be supported by the financing plan is the high school, where we have a couple of years left of that. And then, the financing plan would call for an additional 1% increase to be set aside in the 24-25 budget, the 25-26 budget, and then ultimately the 26-27 budget. And so, our goal there, as everyone probably recalls, was to use that first column, the first blue column, to say, how do we step in those increases in the budget to help support the costs of construction? And then, getting that rolled into the budget. In terms of the revenue budget, here's a quick look at where we were in 22-23. And so, that's kind of the base year, if you will, that's the current year that we're operating in. And then, you can see what the increases or decreases are that we would propose as we look at refining and getting to that final 23-24 budget. And so, the local revenue is about $4.5 million. We'll talk about the detail of that in the coming slides. The state revenue is about an increase of a million dollars. And then, the federal revenue is a decrease in the budget of about $358,000. And so, you can see where we land there, tentatively to this point, the revenue budget side of the budget's at 90.6 million. As we think about those three buckets, the local, the state, and the federal, the local, you can see what actually makes up that $4.5 million. And so, growth in assessed value represents growth in the district from new developments, from new commercial properties, and that's $2.1 million approximately. If you remember, in January, we had talked a little bit about what were trends that we were seeing in revenue and what were trends that we were seeing in expenses. And one trend that we've seen pretty regularly since that 2015-16, where we started to see a lot of development, was growth in assessed value, because we have new developments coming online, we have new commercial properties. And so, that naturally grows the real estate tax base because of assessed values. The real estate tax increase is the one and a half percent connected to the financing plan. And so, as a reminder, when we get to that March 28th conversation, where we say, here's the final proposal on the expense side of the budget, we'll then come back to the board and talk a little more about. we'll then come back to the board and talk a little more about what's that operational component of the tax increase that we would need to consider with the board. Earned income tax is just shy of $1.4 million. And so this is based on the trends that we've continued to see. Interestingly, before the pandemic, you could see that EIT, earned income tax, was growing by about 3%, 4%, or 5% maybe a year. And then through the pandemic, it really kind of leveled off a little bit. And I think that's because of everything that was happening. Now that things have returned back to normal, I would say we're back in that 3%, 4%, 5% area, and in some years, maybe even a little more. And so earned income tax is based on, that increase is based on what we track monthly, and we develop a trend to say, here's where we think we're going to end 22, 23, and here's how we expect that to grow into 23, 24, and making an adjustment to the budget. Interest income is an interesting one. That's one that we really haven't talked about in a long time, or talked about in a good way. $410,000 increase is representative of the budget adjustment that we would see. So we're actively managing our deposits and our investments within what the school code allows to make sure that we're trying to generate as much interest as possible, because interest rates have risen, and you can get CDs at 4% and 5% now, even at 12-month and 18-month rates. And so there is a balance there to be struck between you don't want to lock up all your money because you have cash flow issues potentially, but you also want to try to maximize how much interest you are earning. And so we're happy to see that as an addition to the budget. Other revenue adjustments is just cumulative other adjustments that we've we've made across kind of the local revenue side of the equation, and that's a decrease of about $100,000. And so the total increase then in local revenue is $4.5 million net. This slide just briefly speaks a little bit to assessed value. So if you think back to that that last slide where we talked about what were the biggest areas of increases? And so assessed value, the pie chart shows the composition of our assessed values. So I said another way, you can see the district is about 88% residential when you look at all of our assessed values. The next biggest is commercial at 5.11%, and then we have land, tax exempt, and other. Obviously, the tax exempt don't get tax bills, so we factor all of that into our our budget process as we're planning. Interestingly, when you look at those assessed values, you can also connect them to some of the developments that are happening. So you see Legacy Park being built out, Winding Hill is being finished, Orchard Glen is being finished. There's some commercial development that's happening out Market Street and the Gettysburg Pike. And all that said, I think especially in the residential development, it translates to enrollment for us. So as good as it is to see those assessed values climbing, and we're picking up adjustments in the budget, positive adjustments in the budget because of real estate assessed values, those, because it's all driven by residential, or a lot of it's driven by residential, we have also seen a pretty significant increase in students, which then, on the expense side of the budget, we've had to address staffing needs because we want to maintain class sizes at certain levels. And we know that student services and special ed, we have certain needs that, you know, as we look at those populations, and what do we need to do around around that? And so since 1516, we were probably a little over 3,800 students. Now, in 22, 23, you can see we're just shy of 4,600. And so for perspective's sake, that's about 700 student increase. And in some ways, that's that's almost like absorbing a small school district into Mechanicsburg during that period of time. It's about 18% to 19% increase if you look at this period of time with 700 students. And so a pretty significant increase in terms of enrollment. And we'll continue to talk about that as we head to the March 28th budget, part of the budget, and looking at expenses. In terms of state revenue adjustments, basic education funding is one of the larger increases here. And so I'll probably just highlight some of the bigger increases or decreases, and then talk a little bit about why they increased, or if there's a connection on the expense side of the budget, which is also pretty important. Basic education funding, I think it's fair to say, in the 20, in the 22, 23 budget, the year that we're currently working in, Governor Wolf had gotten a pretty large increase into the basic education funding and special education funding, probably one of the largest increases in some number of years. And so that was beneficial in coming back and saying we had budgeted an increase in 22, 23, but then he got a historic increase even above what we had budgeted. So we needed to reconcile that in the next budget process, which is what we're doing here with both basic education funding and special education funding. So two things about these two line items. One is we're saying we need to pick up the additional amounts we got in the 22, 23 budget, but then we're also projecting forward for the 23, 24 budget, where we're expecting to get a little bit of extra money based on where the governor's proposal is. We do normally try to position ourselves a little more conservatively, because the governor's proposal might be more ambitious than what is actually going to come. And so we like to say, in terms of what's next year's budget look like in terms of state funding, we like to look kind of historically and say, what did we get over the last three or four or five years on average? And that's kind of a baseline that we use when we're making these estimates. Special education funding, you'll see the asterisk there. That's one of a number of asterisks. And so as good as it is to see the revenue increase, these asterisks, all of these expenses, all of these revenue areas represent corresponding increases in expense. And the corresponding increases in expense are greater than what we're seeing here in revenue. And that'll come at the March 28th presentation. Said another way, we're getting $188,000 of additional money for special education funding, but we certainly had more than $188,000 of expenses that got us that money. Likewise, with social security and retirement reimbursement, as the board knows and recalls, we get about 50% reimbursement on those expenses. And so it's good to see the $73,000 in social security, but it it also means that there's $146,000 of additional expense on the other side of the equation. Likewise, Gizzard's reimbursement is at 270. That means there's 540 of expense on the other side of the equation. So those are adjustments that we make on both sides, revenue and expense. And that's really the importance of the asterisk there is that to call out, there are some nice increases here, but the corresponding increases in expenses are greater than what we're seeing here. So $1 million in in state revenue of additional. And then that takes us to federal, where we're continuing to step down and phase out our ESAR budget, our ESAR funding. The goal really is to navigate the kind of the post-pandemic as we emerge, and we have the federal dollars that we're using to support our academic programs and academic achievement. But also, we don't want to set the budget up in a place where we have a cliff by the 24, 25 budget, and we've got a gaping hole in our budget that we're trying to fill because we had to take all the money out at the same time. So a total decrease of about $358,000 there. And then that represents the cumulative summary of what was changing in the local revenue, what was changing in the state revenue, and then what was changing in the federal revenue. As we conclude the presentation, I just want to to share that the budget binders, we will have them ready when the total package is complete for the March 28th meeting. And so when we come back and do the expense side of the presentation, we'll also have the entirety of the budget binders ready and handed out to the board. In that, we'll we'll provide further detail on even what we've talked about here in terms of revenue, but also that expense and some of the supplementary information that we provide to the board as we get ready to move toward those April and June milestones where we get ready for final adoption of budget.
So this was the good news portion of the two-part series. And Ms. Fong did a nice job of putting asterisks beside some of that good news that indicates that there's just additional expenses that'll be coming with some of that increased revenue. So we'll we'll see where things land at a state level with this. But again, as as Greg referred to, that's usually something that we do an adjustment for in the following year. We've all had the experience of knowing that a state budget can go a different direction. I will never forget, early in my tenure as superintendent, getting a letter from the legislator saying, don't increase it, and a letter from the governor saying, increase it. And we were caught in the middle, like, what do we do? And so that's why we use the average typically of the last three years, so that we can keep our budget process moving forward. And as you all know, we have to adopt the budget. So that's that's not a choice for us.
Prior to the state of Pennsylvania.
Oftentimes, before we know. More to come in two weeks.
I think it was interesting when you're talking about the resident resident building as opposed to commercial. I mean, I can't, my wife and I go for walks all the time over there and up round. And I, it's, and now I've been on the board for seven years, six years, and it's literally just massive construction for seven years constantly. And now they have those two other huge neighborhoods going in behind where I am. And it, and every single time I see a house go up, I'm like, I think it'd be three kids in that house, and that's gonna, taxes are gonna be.
My niece has two of them.
Yeah, never, never gonna cover that. And then, and you got me all skewed on when I go get coffee at the new coffee shop, because I look at all those other places, and I'm like, there's no way that the tax revenue covers all the kids in there. But I mean, it's great to see that that we're building, but residential, it's tough.
Yeah, Dr. Benjro always liked warehouses for good reasons.
Exactly.
And I think, Dr. Rude, your point is really good in that some schools might have a big commercial base that they're leaning on, and they don't come with students where they have a big residential base. And so we are picking up some adjustments in revenue, but then there's an 18% of growth in enrollment that we've got to deal with too in terms of how we educate students and the services we provide.
I conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Liddy. Moving on to item 3.02, Capital Area Intermediate Unit, Mr. Bradley.
Yes, intermediate unit, Matt, I always forget to get the right date. February 23rd, and a couple of different items that they had talked about. Recognition for the K Ola program, and they had a member who was responsible for doing a lot of work with K Ola, got some good recognition for her efforts and the work that they've done as far as K Ola is concerned. They talked about their poetry competition, and they had a state poetry, a regional poetry competition, poetry reading, that resulted in a couple of those people moving on to the state level on a poetry reading. They also talked about working closer with the intermediate, with the Cumberland Perry career.
Technical Center.
Technical Center, I couldn't get that name down. Talked about with the some programs that they were working with them and getting more joint partnerships with them and working with them as far as that was concerned. But, and then we will be meeting again in the next weekend, next week.
Any questions for Mr. Bradley? Thank you for the report, Mr. Bradley. I'd also like to remind all the board members, Mr. Bradley will be leaving the board here in the end of November. And so we will need another person to assume that responsibility at the IU unit. It does involve one morning meeting a month?
Yes.
Just people to kind of think ahead a little bit, somebody that might want to fill it. Moving on to item 3.03, Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center, Mr. Seiger.
Thank you. The JOC met on February 27th. We were discussing, among other things, our own instructional assistant shortage, looking at different methods to find and recruit better candidates. And, you know, of course, we are trying to compete against Mechanicsburg and other places too, who are are going through the same pool of individuals. So that's certainly challenging. And I think they said six, maybe we heard that there's six districts in the CTC region who are all doing salary studies that are, you know, kind of maybe affecting the overall price for instructional assistance. So that's that's certainly something to keep in mind. We've been working through some of our grant funding to engage with the employee assistance programs and student assistance programs as a resource for parents to utilize for students, similar to Charisolus that we we have here. And part of that grant funding is what Mr. Bradley was talking about too, in terms of engaging the IU, in terms of helping students deal with change and and kind of managing through, you know, behavioral and mental health issues. But when you think about changes that students entering the CTC, you know, they're they're kind of, you know, they're they're half in the high school and half at the, they're half in their sending district, and they're half at the CTC, and they have only kids to to interact with and learn who they are and work with on a daily basis, and just trying to work through all of that. As in addition to just being a teenager, it just adds a whole other layer to things. So I'm hopeful to see what the IU, what the IU program looks like once it's, once we get to that point. I want to encourage that everyone, all the board members here, to attend a breakfast and tour of the CTC on March 28th from 8:30 to 10:30. I'll share the info. We can have it on the Friday update too. Mr. Brun also offered to any board member that he can take anyone on a tour any other time that they want if that time doesn't suit them. You know, it's a really cool way to try and put together what's going on there. And it's also kind of very lightly attended. I think Mrs. Maris went last year, what, one of three? So.
There was no breakfast.
What?
They took away the breakfast.
Well, make sure there's breakfast this time. That's like, I mean, it's the only reason I, that's the only reason I make it to the night meetings.
There's always breakfast at the IU.
So, so do try and attend that if if you haven't been in a long time. You know, for sure, the the healthcare pathways program and the nursing lab that they put in maybe a year ago at this point, and then kind of understanding where the construction project could be going, like, down that hallway will be the new wing, and down this hallway is where this is going to happen. That's pretty cool to maybe get situated on that.
Well, Greg, it was really helpful last year because he was able to speak to some of that already. And I think it's fabulous to see the changes these days. I hope it advertised, but it's good to do.
Yeah, good. I'm glad. I I have no other news on the construction project, just waiting on one one other district. I think it's April is their timeframe for that. So lastly, the JOC takes the month of March off, although we do a lot of stuff by email, trust me. And so, but we'll be back to meet again in person April 24th. I plan to be there.
Questions for Mr. Seiger? Thank you for the report, Mr. Seiger. Item 3.04, PSBA Legislative Report. I'd just like to report that on April 18th is the Advisy Day at the Capitol. However, it appears to me from an email I just got, it's going to be a virtual.
Yes.
So, which, I know they did that during COVID, but that does kind of defeat the purpose of.
Well, we were in person last year, so that seemed odd to.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna be out there tomorrow, I believe, and I'll kind of find out if that's a mistake or what have you. Because again, if anybody can be off that day, it is nice to go over, you know, people, legislators, and that.
Yeah, we had postcards, and it was virtual.
Yeah, so it's what it says. So, so I'll keep everybody posted on that when I find out a little more on. Because I know that when they did it virtually, it really was just, it kind of like gave you guidance of what to talk to, you know, your individual legislator, senator, and like, yeah, it was like an hour, if I recall, Brian, the virtual, that was virtual?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very different.
Yeah.
I'll keep everybody. Surprised to see that come through, frankly, and that.
Because in January, when they first put it out, it did not indicate, it indicated it was going to be there.
If if I may, I will share with the board that yesterday Cabinet had the opportunity to meet with our new state representative, Thomas Cuts, come through and had a great conversation with him. Seems very supportive of what we're doing in public education. And visited downstairs, saw the students downstairs, and then we were able to go over also to kindergarten academy. Each member of Cabinet kind of gave an overview of their area responsibility and some issues that may come up in the legislature. I behaved myself with charter schools for about 30 seconds and then let it go. So.
Well, I mean, I think that that needs explained, if nothing else. So hopefully, we can also articulate the issue.
Yeah, I I think it was very helpful for him to hear the perspective, whether it was from student services point of view and and what's happening with the needs of our students. And then in addition to that, knowing a little more about a comprehensive plan, our budget, staffing concerns. And then when I had some one-on-one time with him, we talked pretty extensively about charter schools.
I mean, I think that those are two big items. If we could get a statewide reimbursement for a cyber charter school as opposed to, you know, pick any district, you pay that rate, and then more funding going through the formula, it would just be tremendous.
Absolutely.
I thought I'll share that at the Wildcat Foundation Dinner, I was talking to Cheryl Delozier. And for the Elmwood team here, she was sharing with me that maybe it was the the person at the the check-in area had a fourth grader who'd just gone through. had a fourth grader who'd just gone through the tour of the Capitol. And uh, Cheryl had said, you know, there was just days and days and days of these fourth graders coming to the Capitol. And you know, she'd seen on her calendar again, it'd be another Mechanicsburg fourth grader day. And I said, well, that's what, uh, you know, growth in a district looks like. You're getting more days of fourth graders here. It's, it's, you know, nice that we can send them all, but also like, put this together. So uh, that was, I hope we can continue to have practical, practical examples and have, uh, I'm glad you were able to host the.
Should we send two, two kids at a time or?
I do know one of the concerns we had was moving from one state representative to two state representatives. And it appears in the conversation we had that uh, those two are gonna work together closely. And uh, they, they had figured out that, I believe they said, every building in the district, uh, they have at least a student in that building that they represent. So um, there's a, there's a vested interest from both of them uh, in the school district across the board, just because of the way we did our attendance boundaries and for primary buildings, so.
That's why I was kind of disappointed on the virtual advocacy day. Because I mean, we have an excellent relationship with Cheryl, but to meet the new guy would be nice to be able to, you know, meet him in his office or his mission.
Right.
I know Cheryl always says she likes to meet you more vocally anyway, cause she's so busy when some days. I'd say believe him at his office.
That's our next step, if this is actually virtual, we will do that. You'll more than welcome to come along.
I'd love to.
Good, we'll let you know when it is. All right, any further or any additional legislative information we should be talking about? Move on to item three dot zero five Finance Facilities Committee Report, Mr. Sager.
Yes, the Finance Facilities Committee met on uh, February twenty eighth. And uh, we had one item on the agenda, which was a uh, construction update on the swimming pool. We heard from uh, Craftery Roraba regarding the uh, design of the pool and the initial cost estimates of Ms. Longwell. That was uh, all we had at the meeting, there's nothing on the agenda this evening to defer consideration.
All right, any questions for Mr. Sager? And move on to item three dot zero six Board President Report. I'd like to announce an executive session held on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. To discuss personnel matters. And announce an executive session held on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at six forty-five P M. To discuss personnel matters. Move on to item five, New Business Athletics Recreation, Dr. Rhodes.
I make a motion to approve the pool management agreement for operation of the Burrows Pool for the twenty twenty-three pool season.
Do it a second.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Longwell?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item six, New Business Budget and Finance, item six dot zero one, Ms. Morgan.
I'd like to ask the board to approve the treasurer's report, report as per the attachments, which include the following. Number one is the treasurer's report for February twenty twenty-three. Two is the board budget report through February twenty twenty-three. Three is the general fund invoices paycheck number six five three six three through six five six one three in the amount of six hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Number four is the electronic payments in the amount of four million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and six dollars and fifty-nine cents. Five is the general, general fund invoices payable check number six five six one four through six five six three eight in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Six is the capital reserve fund invoices paycheck number one eight five one through one eight five two in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Seven is the series double A of twenty twenty construction fund invoices paycheck number two forty-five through two fifty-eight in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Number eight is the series of twenty twenty construction fund invoices paycheck number two four eight through two five five in the amount of eighteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents. And lastly, number nine is the investment portfolio.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion on the treasurer's report? Mr. Longwell?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item six dot zero two, Mr. Bradley.
I'd ask the board to approve real estate tax settlement as presented in the attachment.
The second.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Longwell?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item six dot zero three, Mr. Bradley.
I'd ask the board to approve the tax policies report as presented in the attachment.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Longwell?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item seven, New Business Curriculum, item seven dot zero one, Mrs. Maris.
Make a motion for the board to approve the school calendar for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as per the attachment.
The second.
Second.
Further discussion on the school calendar? Mr. Longwell?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item eight, New Business Facilities, item eight dot zero one, Mr. Sager.
I make a motion to approve Plan Con Part J for Broad Street Elementary as per the attachment.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Longwell?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item nine, New Business Personnel, item nine dot zero one, Ms. Morgan.
I ask the board to approve the personnel report as per the attachment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Longwell?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item nine dot zero two, Ms. Morgan.
I ask the board to appoint Christina Stata as Human Resources Director for a five-year term beginning July one, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Longwell?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item nine dot zero three, Ms. Morgan.
I ask the board to approve the affiliation agreement with Menat State University.
The second.
Second.
Uh, for further discussion, I have a question, Dr. Latty, is this consistent with other affiliation agreements we have of both in-state and out-of-state schools? And would you like to comment on that at all?
Yeah, as a courtesy, I will. I I think that um, what often happens uh, with these out-of-state is that we have a former student, an alum of Mechanicsburg, who has attended that university and wants to come back home to do their student teaching. Frankly, uh, five, seven years ago, we probably would not have brought forward a, uh, an affiliation agreement for a single situation. But given the pipeline for teachers and the need for teachers in the district, uh, we've become much more open to this kind of a, uh, an agreement.
I think we've seen a bunch go through like this, right?
We have.
So it's, it sounds like it's a, it's a good idea in that it's somebody who wants to come back. And what, what, what started this, it's somebody who wants to come back, likes the area. And as you can imagine, maybe.
And it's just for student teaching, there's no guarantee that they would get hired by us. But yes, it's somebody who wants to come back to the area.
Further discussion? Mr. Longwell?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item ten, New Business Policy, item ten dot zero one.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the first reading of revised Board Policy two two one dress code, which will be, uh, which will allow two opportunities for the public comment, those being the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting and the April eleventh, twenty twenty-three board meeting.
Do we have a second on policy two two ones first reading?
Second.
All right, I'll open it up for any discussion. And I actually have a question, a beginning question. Is on the uh, summary, I mean, I know in your presentation, Mr. Fitz and others, is, you know, I think one of the driving forces is the policy emphasizes equitable enforcement with regards to student groups and responsibility to eliminate marginalization based on dress, which I fully support. And, but I want to go to the fourth bullet point and partially to the fifth bullet point under guidelines. And where students may wear head, headwear worn for religious or medical reasons, head coverings, hair accessories and hairstyles connected to a student's culture, race or identity. Is, is that prohibiting other students from wearing head covers? And if so, isn't that marginalization? I mean, shouldn't we, I'm all for them being able to wear head covers, I want to say that, whoever it is and for whatever reasons. But by naming specific reasons you can't, does that prohibit other students from just having a bad hair day and wanting to wear a head cover under the proposal?
I think I would actually draw the biggest um, difference between that bullet and the next bullet, of course, that may not wear hats and hoods. Um, and that being the difference. Certainly, the committee that, that put this together, being able to be very clear about the idea of students wearing um, durags, if you will, or tight hair coverings to be able to hold down their hair. Mr. Harris had talked about a couple situations last week when we shared of trying to allow for that and understanding um, that from a racial perspective, that we've come to learn much more about actually what it takes some of our students to, to be able to put their hair uh, in a place that they're comfortable for, for the day. That the committee was very set on making sure that that was something that we put into the policy. Now, of course, then the question comes, where does that line end with the obviously, you know, hats and the hoods? And I'll be quite open to share that of everything in the policy that has probably generated the most discussion and debate following the committee's recommendations. And um, I'll share, I'll share both sides of the issue that are out there. Uh, the side from the committee ultimately in recommending that we not include hats and hoods was really twofold. Uh, the idea of being able to identify students, whether that be in the hallways or on surveillance cameras or those kinds of things. So from a safety perspective, uh, seeing a hat and a hood being different from, say, something that's more tightly, you know, worn around the head. The other perspective is that frankly, some of our students uh, said that when they see a student in the classroom that might have a hat or a hood on, that they perceive them as being disengaged and not as welcoming and not being as involved in the classroom environment. Again, our perception standpoint. So obviously, the other side of the point, uh, the other side of the other perspectives are that from the engagement standpoint, it is just a perception. And certainly, uh, having a hood up doesn't say that a student is necessarily more engaged or less engaged than somebody who doesn't have a hood up. And plenty of students who aren't wearing hoods at all that aren't engaged. And students that could wear a hood and would be perfectly engaged in class. So that would be the other, the argument there. And from frankly, from the safety and security perspective, uh, that has not held up very well. Stock and Leader, to be quite open, has, has told us that uh, that it's fine to have that in there. And there's other districts that do. But that ultimately, if it were to truly be challenged, that in all likelihood, that wouldn't be something that we would anticipate holding up.
And that's why I didn't even want to get to the fifth bullet point yet. But since you brought it up, I mean, that should be completely striking in my opinion.
Can you read the fifth bullet point, I'm sorry, I don't have.
The fifth. Pools is no hats. And even when you get into lewd shirts, et cetera, I mean, the direction the courts in Pennsylvania went through, the appellate courts is, it's not enforceable. It, it, if you weren't wearing something, you weren't. I mean, it's, it's proof, you have to actually specifically prove how it was disruptive to the classroom is really where the courts are. And please interject if you don't.
Well, I, I think that there, there are some standards around uh, lewd and obscene. And, and many of the things that are outlined in the, what, fifth bullet and the third sub-bullet there. Staying specific to hats and hoods, I think, is what Mr. Bits was referring to uh, in terms of the opinion from Stock and Leader.
So is it worth having in there is the question, is your.
Right, and back to my original question, I mean, I really struggled to accept something that to me, although I support it absolutely. I think, and from an administrator's standpoint, when Mr. Harris presented it, it's why should our staff members have to make a decision if something is appropriate or not? Who are they to question what religion somebody is or isn't based on what they're wearing? And why can't everybody just wear a head cover if they so want to? I don't understand the need for the language, I guess. Cause to me, it's excluding people, is that not correct? If you don't meet this criteria, can, can I just wear a durag?
It excludes further than we did previously, I think would be what the committees would say. And ultimately, that um, for those reasons that the committee shared, they felt like it was something that they wanted to see stolen. But as I said, there are different points of view, even in our district, on whether, whether it should stay or not.
And I did wonder what our beef was with hats. And I have a wonder where you, you wear sweatshirt to school and get cold during the day. I could see you quickly flipping that up to get warm. And then suddenly you're non-compliant, slip it down, you're good. And I'm like, ooh, that could be a fun game to play. And so I, I agree with you, hats and hoods for me, particularly with just spent the last two years in some cases requiring masks, which seem like uplocks a lot more on your identity than just having a hat or a hood. I, I am supportive of allowing hats and hoods.
Mr. Up, you're, you're suggesting striking like those three in a row there, the, the headwear you can wear and the one you can't?
If we want to keep students may wear the headgear, and you mentioned that the various cultures and things, that's fine. If they also, if people also can wear hats and hoods, because that basically then includes everybody into it.
Can they wear hats now presently?
I know our state senator, one of our state senators, you know, his image is a hood, like, and you know, he was a, our lieutenant governor for many years. It's like, I, I, that's why it just like surprises me now that all of a sudden a committee, especially coming from where it came from, is you'd rather wear this, this and this, but not just a regular hat.
Yes, one could say, you've seen him wearing a hoodie, you haven't seen him wearing the hood on of the hoodie. He wears a hoodie, but you don't see him walking around with that up.
But I think the distinction is, and it just, my distinction is if you're going to allow someone to wear head coverings, um, we're assuming that we're the ones that should say why you should wear the head covering. And that, that's where it gets.
That's what, thank you, I mean, that's my point.
You know, saying like, this, this is assuming that now we're becoming the people who say, this is why you can wear a hat cover.
Yeah, and then Mr. Eric.
And that's exclusive, that, that language is, is, is exclusive.
Exclusive, yeah.
By nature, right?
Right.
Yeah, I guess I'm old school. When you come in, when you come into a classroom, you take your hat off.
Or you come into a building, yeah.
When you come into a building, you take your hat off. You can wear the hat in the, in the general common area, when you come into a classroom, I guess I'm old school.
But be careful, this policy was created to get away from old school.
Cause why?
And to me, it's just creating a whole new list of things.
Yes, yes.
That's how I was, I was always raised and taught, it's a respect thing.
See, I was raised that a male had to remove their hat, but a woman could wear a hat.
Well, yeah.
Like, but again, like, who's to say who the male and who the woman is in today's court? They're like, it's, we're trying to eliminate that is what I thought the policy change was about.
I agree with you, I think Mr. Harris's um, example last week or two weeks ago was a conversation he didn't want to be in and like, and I don't think we should force him to be in, in the future. Like, did you have a, you have a bad air day? What's the reason you, you had to wear this or not and make that, that, that uh?
I can tell you many girls would have a bad hair day more than, you know, a guy would, I would assume.
So they wear a bandana over their hat, what's, I don't understand the issue. I mean, uh, less than a hundred years ago, kids came to school in feet sack dresses. They came here to learn, not to worry, it's the truth. They have overalls and feet sack dresses, and they went to schools.
We're going back to the eighteen hundreds already.
That was done during the.
But I think to get back to your point, let's, can I, can I get back to your point? Because I think you made a really good point that struck a chord with me. And you said that if, if we know that it's not enforceable, why would we even put it in policy? I guess that's the underlying question.
Okay, but.
And if we're comfortable with putting it in a policy, that's fine.
Also know, this came from a committee and the students didn't seem to have a problem telling people they can't wear hats and hoodies either.
Now, there's a couple of students on the committee there, that doesn't mean that represents all the students. all the students.
That's their job, to represent the students.
I don't think we're, can I, I, I was going to make a comment, actually separately from that. Um, I will make a comment that publicly that my son was on this committee. And it was an amazingly run committee. And the administration took, like, effort to make sure that those students were available to put input. I think there was a very diverse group of students, and I think that, um, from the committee's standpoint, it was very, very well-run. So I don't think we're in any position to question the committee and how the integrity of the committee. I think it was well-run. I might be biased. That's for public record now, but I don't know, it's public record.
All our committees are well-run.
But what I'm saying is, I think from a thought, from a standpoint of us questioning something that is brought to us by a well-intentioned committee, your point makes cold, most water. Is it incumbent of us to put this in policy if we know it can't be upheld in the courts?
Or for our port superintendent or administrators is trying to figure out, oh, I want to play with you today.
It's taking some of the, it's taking the issues of gender identity and clothing and spaghetti straps at your shoulders, or it's taking all that away, but it's actually making more serious questions of, it's, 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 to my, to me, and maybe I'm looking at it half-empty as opposed to half-full, but it's putting more of a burden on the administrators when they have to start questioning if somebody, do you have a religious reason to wear that? Not take it all. Like, or you don't appear to be somebody that should be wearing that, why are you wearing it?
Or you're simply claiming that a certain person can have a bad hair day and somebody else can't.
Right. Which is hard for me to accept.
Correct. Did I look at you when I said that?
I apologize.
But, but do you, I agree with what, I actually agree with what you said. The committee came and presented, I don't, were you at the forecourt?
No.
No, I was, I.
Yeah, I dialed in, didn't I? I dialed in.
You were down. The two presenters who were here were really great. And I think that they've opened against the committee's work. It's a matter of just the idea of, they had their perspective, the administration had a perspective, we have our own perspective.
Oh, the presenters are absolutely.
Yeah, they were great.
Yeah, but I, I feel like we don't nitpick other committees' recommendations when it comes to us. They've, they've already met multiple times and had all the conversations that we've already had. So why would we be conflicting what they've suggested?
It's the function of the Constitution of the Commonwealth and the school code that there's not elected people who make, this is actually something required by the school code that school boards do.
I, I totally understand that.
And it's our policy.
Right, policy.
It's our policy. It's not an administrative policy. Yeah, it's our policy.
It's our, it's a board policy. And we do change policy, by the way. We don't always accept who is recommended to hire. That's, that's why we're here. We're elected by the public.
I would, I would say that from the committee's standpoint, we were upfront with them from the beginning, that this is board policy. We are recommending first from the committee to administration, and obviously, as I shared, we shared them with multiple administrative teams. And then it's being recommended to the board, but ultimately, it sits with the board to make that decision. So just from a purely personal standpoint, the committee would not be surprised if something ultimately ended up being changed. And as I said, I think, I know the committee felt most importantly that it should be recognized that students may wear different pieces there. Um, and the fact of no hats and hoods, as, as I said, was probably the, the most, uh, the issue that received the least amount of consensus, not just within the committee, but beyond the committee as well.
Makes sense.
And I, I would just say I greatly appreciate the respect that you've talked to about the committees, because we do take a tremendous amount of work and effort. But I'll, I just want to reinforce what Mr. Bits said, that we were very clear upfront. The, the primary responsibility of this board is to set policy and we operate in it. I, I'll also say that if we were bringing forward a recommendation around the academic program, I, I probably would be like, whoa, second here, we, this was, but this is policy. So I would take no offense to a board making adjustments.
This is actually, like, the twelve listed things that the school board must do.
I know.
We must, this is our policy.
I understand that a hundred percent.
And honestly, I wouldn't want to make this policy without the input of the committee. And I think, I mean, the first two bullet points, I think, are absolutely excellent. And I think the antenna, the third one, to make sure that people feel comfortable from different cultures, I think that's great, too. I just think we have to do the final putting it together, because I don't think we as a committee would have come up with those first two items without a lot of input. We as a board, like, I don't think I've been forwarded like that. I think it's excellent.
Yeah.
Really is.
So do we have a understanding of what neighboring school districts do they allow hats and hoodies?
It's a mix.
That's a couple of mix.
Yeah. It, it's not the, I'm, I'm a little bit old school myself. As a former high school principal, I didn't want to see hats. I will say that I went back and did some Google research and, and the reality is that this goes back to medieval times with knights walking into the castles without taking their helmets off, you know? And you could end up dead pretty quick if you did that. And so it just, it grew out of that. So, because I would say, well, what, why is it respectful or disrespectful to do that? And I didn't really have a good answer, other than that's the way I was brought up.
I mean, we had a presenter today that did an excellent job. The theory was a violation of the policy, that that's memory of his grandfather. I mean, I, that kid was, they all were, they were absolutely excellent. And so what, Mr. Bits says, take that hat off? Like, come on, like, his mom had a hat on, too, like.
Yeah, I, I actually feel pretty strongly about. That was a stretch.
What's that?
I think that was a stretch.
And he was in, you know, from baseball.
He was in a baseball uniform. He was presenting. He was doing the presentation.
He had a hat on. He said violation of the law.
Let's not, let's not, let's not knock this kid, because that was an amazing presentation. Okay, listen.
Just, just, we're taking it out of the policy.
What my point is, Rick, is that's why it shouldn't be in the policy.
I, I agree.
I remember a kid years ago, in either two thousand and two or the one before that came, and he had really long arms like I do. And he sat there, and his mom, who was a new employee here, almost mortified because I was sitting with him. His dad's back here laughing right now, is, you know, his point was, he almost needed, if he was a woman at that time, he would have almost needed a maxi skirt to meet the code where other people were short-armed. And that's still the same thing. I don't know if you were, I don't think you were there.
All right, so what, do we see more behavioral problems with people coming along and knocking your hats off, um, all day long, and then teachers having to deal with that, too? I mean, I feel like if that's a problem, you won't wear a hat, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
They could knock your books down, they could pull your book bag.
That seems kind of defeat, I think the original point was, is it worth putting something in policy that we know is not able to be upheld? I don't know.
And it's going to put the administration in a really uncomfortable position, in my opinion.
And many students could perceive it as being excluded from things that other students can do and should be able to do, quite frankly.
May I ask, is there support for the rest of the policy? Because I think a simple change to this would be just to remove hats and hoods from the fourth bullet and let the rest, and then take a vote on that. My concern is, I would hate to see us not move forward with the entire policy because of just one segment of it.
Well, I have a question. Would hats and hoods be then placed in one of the other three of the allowable things? Or would it, if not, it still could be a question to ignore?
I mean, I think it was good not to just take it off, may not wear, but then you're not encouraging it. Please wear hats to school.
I think if you take it out, then you're not, you're not putting a permission structure in place, like the others which are appropriate for folks who need to know that. And I think we can always revise it again if the building administration comes back and says, we've had a rash of, uh, hat problems, uh, hat-related issues, and we need to address this. Because I think right now, I'm favoring not making the administration deal with trying to figure this out and, and have to, we're trying to make their lives easier and clearer for.
That was my initial thinking when I saw it, yeah.
I would say that most of the, the policies that I looked at that allowed hats and hoods were simply silent on the issue of hats and hoods. They didn't specifically say you may wear them.
So they did not include it in what would be like the first draft?
They just didn't have the status quo. Because saying you can't wear it is excluding.
Is the principle.
Is, is, and, and I think just not having it in there is fine.
Yeah, the first, yeah. Just take the bullet out, yeah.
So I just need some direction from the board here on just remove hats and hoods?
Mr. Up, is that for the second reading? That was in my request, yes. And I think.
Would you like to, do we need to amend the motion? Or we're going to take the first reading through a, as a vote, and then the administration will come back with edits for the second reading? That help? We should do it?
That's how we typically do it.
Okay, I can do that.
We've always done it that way, when there's changes on readings of policy. And this actually happens, well, policy is usually when it happens.
Just trying to understand how we get to that plan.
And I think because it's acknowledgement of the first reading, it's not necessarily approved of it, I think then there's an opportunity to make the adjustment that come back to the actual.
Yeah. I mean, I think that meets Robert's rules of orders. But in the worst-case scenario, we just have to read it April and then vote it in May, like, you know? That's nothing we've ever done before.
Typically, our first reading's in a work session, so we don't actually take a vote. But we would need to vote tonight because it's in the voting session to move it forward for a second reading. And you have a motion on the floor and a second.
So is there any final discussion on Policy Two-Two-One? Seeing none, Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item ten dot zero two, Dr. Rose.
I make a motion to approve student BD to complete the remainder of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as a non-resident tuition-free student.
The second.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
On to item twelve, hearing of visitors. We have reached a second opportunity for public comment. This opportunity is reserved for comments on issues not listed on the agenda and not being voted upon this evening. As a reminder, public comment is limited to residents of the school district. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual. It requires community members to observe a reasonable decorum. If you would like to address the board, come up to the podium, show your district name and address for items that were not on the agenda tonight.
Hi, my name is Jason Kickline. I'm District Four Upper Allen, two one zero six Fellers Hollow Drive. I just wanted to thank the board for your consideration of the high school pool, the new design budget. Um, I have a whole speech prepared, but I don't think we need to go through all of that. But I just want to say that swimming has meant so much to my family and so many families in this district. Um, it's more than just a sport. Uh, I know Rick back here has kids that have some special needs, and when they get in the water, all those issues that they have just disappear, and they feel like part of the team. And there's a lot of kids like that that are dealing with issues on the spectrum and so forth. But more than just the kids, yeah, me as a parent, you know, I, I had kids, I'd go to work, I'd come home during the day. But when I went to swim, I would sit there and I'd get to talk with parents. I'd actually get to, like, have adult conversations. And there's so many cool things that we've been able to do as a team. And that's just the swim club. I mean, that's not even looking at anything else that the pool has done for the community as well. So, um, and it's just creates strong families, it creates strong communities, and it creates legacy, too. So many times I see, you know, the high schoolers teaching the younger kids and taking them under their wing. I see the college kids coming back from school on break and they wear a coat on their shirt, you know, and they run a practice. Um, I was just enamored, uh, a couple of years back, you know, Coach Nestor had passed away, and the, the line wrapped around the building. There's so much support in the community for the swim program like that. Um, it means, you know, not comparing yourself to others and just doing better than you did yesterday and setting up those goals and knocking them down and setting up another round because you found the courage to believe in yourself and that anything is possible. So I could see that impact on all the kids that come through the swim program, you know, not, it's not just in the pool. They take that academically, they take that personally. Uh, they're working with each other, trying to figure out how to resolve sometimes conflict or how to make friends. Uh, so it's been incredibly encouraging for me. Um, so swimming's not just a sport, it's kids, it's family, it's community, and it's legacy. And, you know, we have strong kids, strong families, and strong communities. We could do so much more. And so I'm really excited for what this new facility is going to leave in Mechanicsburg, and that's legacy. So thank you so much for your consideration of that. Thanks, sir.
Any other public comment for items that were not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, item thirteen, Ms. Morgan.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.